Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Spokane City Council Study Session for April 28. We are going to have a couple Bicycle Advisory Board interviews, and then we're going to go to the core of our meeting, which is a joint meeting with the Park Board. And then we're going to have a bit of an update on ARPA, RFPs. So let's start with our interviews. I think we're going to start with Christina Ramirez. Christina is joining us virtually.
There we go. Hi.
All right. Hi, Christina. So thank you for joining us. I'm just going to ask you to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you're interested on the Bicycle Advisory Board and what you think you'll bring to it. And then council members may have questions or may not. Don't take it personally one way or the other. But anyway, Christina, tell us a little bit about yourself and what you'll bring to the Bicycle Advisory Board.
So I have been commuting basically the last 25 years, originally in Seattle, but also in Missouri, and then when I moved back to Washington, Spokane. And I commute most of the summer and some of the fall. I don't commute during the winter. I'm not that hardcore. But I found that since my company moved up north, that the bike lanes were a little bit more difficult to navigate than they were when I worked downtown. And so I got interested in how the city decides to design bike routes. And so far, my initial, attending the initial meeting these last few months has been really informative. I've really enjoyed kind of seeing the way the process works and how I can contribute. It seems like there's not quite as many of us, people who commute from South Hill to the north side of town, but there are enough of us that it'll benefit us all.
Right. Great. What route do you use?
I tend to basically Fisk to the Ben Ber Trail, and then I kind of navigate through Logan District. I don't personally love the Cincinnati Green Way, so I take Dakota, and then I get up on Addison, and then I take that pretty much the rest of the way to my office. And then going home, I have a different route because I do not enjoy the Fisk Hill from Ben Ber Trail. But yeah, that's my usual commute.
All right. Cool. Good. Questions from any council members? All right. Well, we know the Bicycle Advisory Board is one of our more active community boards, and we really appreciate it. And in the six years I've been on council, I believe the Streets Department and Engineering have made a shift, and they're really embracing it more. So I think you'll have more projects to look at, and that on-the-ground input that you bring is critical. So thank you for doing that. And we'll be voting on this shortly at an official council meeting. You don't have to be at the meeting, but then we'll let you know, and you can officially go to the meetings as a voting member. So we really appreciate it. So thanks for your commitment. And now I'm going to invite up Michelle Seidels, if I'm saying that right. Come on up to the microphone, Michelle.
Hello.
Hi. So same thing. If you could just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in bicycles and what you think you'll bring to the board.
I'm a lifelong Spokaneite, and I've ridden a bike the whole time in different capacities. So as a wild kid on the South Hill, just running free, or triathlons, or commuting to work in the valley. And I've benefited from a lot of the work that people have done before us. So the Centennial Trail, just so much freedom to go back and forth across the city, and it made it possible to commute to work. We recently moved from Liberty Lake to downtown, and so we've been kind of embracing trying to live a little more car-free as pedestrians and cyclists. We bought e-bikes last year, and so now we're zipping up the South Hill without breaking a sweat, and we're just finding our bubble is getting bigger and bigger on our bikes. So I just want to do my part to keep moving in the direction that the city's been going.
Great. Great. Any questions for Michelle? All right. Well, again, thank you. Same speech. Thanks for all your help, and we'll be notifying you shortly and really looking forward to your input.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Let's move to our Park Board City Council meeting. And until we get our briefing center figured out for the Internet, we're going to keep doing these virtually because it's just a little awkward if you're down here in the audience. So I appreciate everyone participating virtually, and especially want to welcome Jennifer Ogden, President of the Park Board. And Jennifer and I just spent a couple days together talking about sustainability in Spokane at St. John's Cathedral and learned a lot, and the Parks Department was well-represented there. The agenda, we'll do the roll call in a second here, but the potential agenda is we're going to get a president's report, and then we're going to talk here about the Park's Open Space Master Plan and updates, new Park Board committees, and then we have some topics beyond that, depending on our time. But maybe I'll turn it over to, looks like Garrett Jones, for a roll call.
Thank you, Council President. I think we'll skip on the roll call, and then we'll just go into introductions of board members from our President Jennifer Ogden.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Garrett. The Park Board has a new member, Christina Virchill, Christina Waze. And I think you may have seen her little brief in the spokesman review, something that other board members were thinking was kind of a new stage for Park Board members, getting all that press. We have a great Park Board. Bob Anderson, the Vice President, is not able to be here today, but as I say your name, please, Waze. Nick Sumner, past President and Head of the Riverfront Park Committee. Greta Gilman, Head of the Land Committee. Sally Ladato, not able to be here today, but she is Head of Recreation. Jerry Sperling, Head of the Golf Committee. Barb Ritchie. There we are. She's our Park Foundation Liaison. Hannah Kitts is Head of our Bylaws Committee, and Hannah is usually by name because she's working and does this multitasking thing. Kevin Brownlee, Head of Urban Forestry, and of course Christina. And then Jonathan Bingle, we're very grateful for you as our liaison. I wanted to briefly, and I mean briefly, thank you for all of your support, council members, over the past year for funding for our playground and restrooms, for our North Bank, wonderful playground there that has turned out so well. The North Suspension Bridge, your partnership there has been invaluable. The Stormwater Project for Downriver, and especially for your help with our funding for the Don Cardon Bridge. As I said to Council Member Bingle previously, if it weren't for you, we would be spending our entire budget on updating that bridge, and we wouldn't be able to reach out into the neighborhoods. So your assistance and support and partnership has been essential. I want to move on to the master plan. We have had great success with this master plan. First time we've done it in 11 years, 11, not 10 because of COVID. We had over 5,306 responses, which is four times more than any other sort of public outreach response on any other project. And it really is a plan that's driven by the public response. It's not something driven by staff agendas. We're really listening to what our public wants to say. And 90% of them felt that the parks were essential to provide their connection with nature and their care of themselves, body and soul, and their participation in their community. They really, that also was an outcome of this recent conference at the St. John's Cathedral. But parks are seen as the solution to many of the mental health and physical health issues in our society. And so this is hopefully the feel-good portion of your day as you hear about all the positives that are coming out of parks. We have a couple of top-tier things that have come out of, top-tier projects that have come out of this survey, some desires from the public for enhanced restrooms, playground improvements, improved trailheads. The residents really use our parks for their simple pursuits of walking, spending time with family, walking their dogs, things like that. So the second-tier areas are off-leash dog areas, fishing areas, skate parks, disc golf, and a lot of wishes for a public indoor pool. The residents believe that we should have neighborhood access improved to parks by building new parks on city-owned land before renovating existing land or acquiring new lands. They really want us to use what we have and to maintain our parks as we have them and keep them up to date. Six in 10 residents feel the city should seek additional funding and partnerships to enhance these parks, and they have identified, therefore, the neighborhood parks as being most in need of improvement. So we have a really unusual park situation here in Spokane. As you know, I think we're leaders in the nation in that we have the best overall distribution of parkland and the most citizen access within 10 minutes of a walk to a park. But we have areas, as you know, in the city which are in need of parks, where there's a real density of population. Shiloh Hills up in District One, the very north of District Three, and this very south of District Two, which are really in need of more parks to keep that 10-minute walk available to the citizens. So as we look at the four themes, land, water, people, and legacy, there's a framework for how we set our policies and invest in our parks. We're going to be seeking additional partnerships and contributions from the City General Fund and from other sources to dedicate to our year capital replacement and repair. We're going to be pursuing with you, we hope, a partnership in asking our developers to set aside city land and green spaces as they develop those areas for living as green space, as potential park space. Because without that, we get that sort of Shiloh Hills density of population without access to that public space, that green space that keeps us all so healthy. Perhaps that's an impact fee, maybe that's an ordinance requirement. We'll have to take a look at that. We are looking at a land evaluation, acquisition, and surplus policy change, possibly a change in the city charter. But we have in the past received gifts from the public, and the Park Board in the past was in the habit of just accepting those gifts. And some of them are the size of a Ford Explorer, and what can we do with them? They're surrounded by private land, and they're sort of sitting there collecting trash. One of the things that came out of the conference, I was talking with Mr. Howard at Avista, and he was talking about the need for Avista to put in EV charging stations. And he and I were discussing whether or not some of that surplus land that we can't use as a park might be a site for an EV charging station. And therefore, maybe parks would get a percentage of that income to go on forward with other park policy and capital improvements. But some sort of use of that surplus land beyond just collecting trash and being a liability. We're looking for key partnerships for a public indoor swimming facility, and we'd like to develop and implement a trail maintenance plan because the natural trails are such a key asset as the citizens look at their use of the city parkland. They really enjoy those trails. Some of the potential project specifics are developing Meadow Glen Neighborhood Park on existing city land to improve access to those underserved neighborhoods, again, filling in those gaps at Shiloh. Prioritize renovations and improvements in parks that are failing due to poor condition, lacking recent investment. Some of them haven't been touched in decades in the neighborhood parks. Maybe they're located in those social and environmental equity zones that need improvement. And we're looking at a potential future bond as we take a look at what we might need to do to expand our outreach into the neighborhoods. Perhaps the bond would have new parks and equity zone in each district, maybe three major renovations of neighborhoods or community parks, three major trailhead renovations, and replacing antiquated park irrigation systems. That's been going on in golf. Perhaps you've had a chance to read the Golf Report. We've been doing a lot of water conservation as we replace the irrigation in our park systems. The stream that was in Indian Canyon, it wasn't a stream, it was a leak. That has been fixed. The Japanese pond in the Manitow Park was leaking considerably. We have stopped that, and that has saved millions of gallons. And so we are always looking for that water efficiency. In terms of next steps, we will be ending in May with the final public input and revision. The park plan will come to, the master plan will come to Park Board for adoption in June, we hope, and then you all would see it in June, July. And then the second half of 2022 would be the looksee at the investment framework and prioritizing what those next steps would be as we develop that future bond initiative. So that's kind of a dry run-through, but Nick Hammond, I understand, is here to show you some visuals, if you would like to see them, to sort of expand on some of these themes. Do you have any questions, comments? Would you like to see those visuals?
Yes. That'd be great.
Okay. A quick answer to a long question. Nick, you want to go?
Glad to share with you some visuals you should be seeing, and I'm going to pull this up full screen.
Can you speak up just a little bit, Nick?
Can you hear me okay, Council President?
Yeah, now we can. Yep.
Okay, great. Going to pan up here and just show you some really quick visuals on how we evaluate our park system. I'll be brief, give you a couple of those boilerplates that we talked about here. What you see on your screen right now is an action plan or a vision plan for what came out of this document. What you see are several pink dots, which represent new park facilities in existing city land. What you see are several purple dots with arrows, or exclamation points, excuse me, which are prioritized sites for investment within areas of need in the city. That would include Wild Horse Park, Mini Ha Ha Park, and Cortland Park are some good examples there. What you see are several orange dots, which are sort of second-tier needs for improvements in park facilities throughout the city. So this map is really showing you where we might invest in capital projects. You see these hatched areas here with a yellow money sign in the middle of them. Those represent areas where we see need, where we're acquiring additional land for parks. Shiloh Hills being the most important example, the highest level of service potential increase possible. Also, East Central. East Central Spokane, east of Underhill Park is in need of a pocket park or neighborhood park. So those are two good examples in those locations. Would love to share with you these in the minutes. There are symbols for different amenities desired by each neighborhood or district within the city. You see dogs and pickleball panels all over the city. You see sports fields more likely than others in District One. You see trails more likely than other districts in District Three. And you see in South Spokane, need for aquatics more than a couple of the others. So those are, those are community desires, and dog parks and the pickleball, again, are citywide desires. I'm going to pan through a couple here just to show you some of the watershed analysis that was done. What does this mean? This is, this is, all of these yellow dots you see are homes outside of a 10-minute walk at park. So that would be Meadow Glen Park at the North Indian Trail, East Central Spokane, and then as we get down into the Comstock neighborhood. Surprising that you might see some in the Comstock neighborhood, but there are some gas there. As I continue to go down, one of the analyses that was conducted was a thorough evaluation of the condition of each facility. And so you see red dots meaning poor condition, yellow in just better than poor, excuse me, orange just better than poor, yellow being okay, and green being good. What does that mean? Well, we compare that with these blue dots. And the blue dots here are sites which, the bigger the blue dot, the less money that's been spent in it in the last 20 years. So we went back 20 years to look at all of the capital we've spent in parks. And the big blue dots are parks that have zero capital dollars spent in them over the last 20 years. The smaller the dot, the more the money's spent. We overlaid the two of those to come up with a map you see on your screen here, which is a recommendation for where to invest capital money. The red dots being a highest priority, the orange dots being the second-highest priority and on down the line. All of these facilities are facilities which are within social and environmental equity zones, which are historically under-invested in, and which are in poorer condition than other facilities. So we do have data to say where we should be spending money in parks. We have also, and I think this is of interest to many of you, a social and equity, or social and environmental equity zone map. This was generated using a lot of data to say where in the city of Spokane are there at-risk populations which are in higher need of park facilities than ours. The darker the purple color, the higher the equity investment zone potential. So we can apply that filter now for investing in park facilities. We've also mapped where we have facilities that are meeting those northwest trends, pickleball, dog parks, disc golf. We don't have them many throughout, many places throughout the city, but we do have them in several. And so we wanted to show where they are so that we can learn where we need to enhance them. We've also mapped where we have the highest conservation potential for land. So as we get land development proposals and plaits coming in, and they ask the Parks Department, hey, would you acquire this for conservation land? Does it have potential for that for you? We can say yes or no based on a very factual set of information and data. The darker the green, the higher potential for conservation property function, actual habitat function. So that's Leita Valley, that's the Little Spokane, that's the Spokane River, generally following our river course. Just giving you a high-level overview of each chapter, each chapter having goals and objectives, not to belabor all of those goals and objectives. We have themes of land, water, legacy, and people. This is really an important Venn diagram to show you, and then I'll get out of the way if you have any questions. There are a set of criteria that we have developed with our consultants and with the public, really representing the public's prioritization matrix for projects and investment for parks. And those are a combination of are these proposals in an equity investment zone, is the condition of the park in need of investment, is there an opportunity for funding, and what is our need to level of service assessment? And so we should, should, and can apply this filter to everything that we do in parks and recreation, whether it be policy, capital, or other investment that we would be interested in making. There are also a number, and I won't show them all to you here, of policy, capital, and guideline recommendations for within our park system, including how developers may need to contribute potentially to make and preserve the existing levels of service we have today. So we have evaluated each of those, including operational shifts in our own operation and how we might better provide level of service to our community. And then that bond program, which I will go back to briefly. Kind of giving you the masterful light, I'll get off the bandstand here unless you have any questions.
So just one note, if you could go ahead and email us the draft plan, that'd be great, just so we could dive into that. But putting that aside, any questions for Nick? All right. Very good. I've been on that advisory committee to that, so it's been really helpful, and how deep you all have dug in to get data and applied it and get community input. I really appreciated that. It's been very good. Okay. I guess the one question I had is if we're looking at some kind of bond initiative, what year would that go to a vote? If anyone knows. Might be up in the air.
Council President, I can speak to that a little bit. From our perspective, you know, again, a lot of the second-half analysis is around the funding mechanism, and those action plans and priorities will happen that second half of 2022. Right now, we think there's a potential sweet spot window within the 2024 timeframe. That would be 10 years since the Riverfront Park Master Plan. That would give us adequate time to be able to finalize what those priority projects would be, how we would communicate those priority projects to the public, and then look at that financial plan with the second half of 2022, and then working with all our stakeholders in 2023. But right now, that 2024 timeframe seems to align pretty well for us and potentially aligns well with other partners as well in the community.
All right. Anything more about the master use plan, that data? Otherwise, we'll go to the next section on new Park Board committees and membership, and just some highlights on that. Looks like that's you, Jennifer.
Okay, yes. We had sort of a freeze for a minute there. So we have some new Park Board committees. Those are the Development and Volunteer Committee, and its tandem Citizen Advisory Committee that have been created in the past year. And Bob Anderson was not able to be here today, but as you saw in his report, this is a way, again, to have the public have more input into what happens with their parks. And so the Citizen Advisory Committee, we hope, will be made up of, and it's largely full, of our Friends of groups, those citizens who have adopted a park and are sort of keeping a watchful eye over that, or adopted a recreation specialty such as disc golf or skateboarding to be able to participate in park recreation programs and those amenities with us, those partners. The Development Volunteer Committee, then, is the actual subcommittee of the Park Board, to which these Friends of groups report through Kelly Brown, who is here today, or at least was on the previous meeting, that's where she was. And so she's the President of the CAC. And that group takes a look at where the potential partnerships would be, how we can support those Friends groups, how we can coordinate volunteer efforts, and perhaps look for funding partners or in-kind sorts of partnerships to help move things along. So those are coming along. King Cole Commemorative Project is a subcommittee of the Friends of Riverfront Park, and that specifically is looking at a way to take a look at the Expo 74 Celebration coming up in 2024 and asking for an artwork that would be sort of a gateway entrance into Riverfront Park and a King Cole Way that goes through Riverfront Park, highlighting those Expo 74 themes and bits that are left over, the pavilion, the theme stream, things like that, the carousel, of course, taking a look at, highlighting that once again, because that was Spokane's environmental legacy from the World's Fair. Spokane is still the smallest world, the smallest city to pull off a World's Fair. And in fact, as Bill Young said in his book, the Shanghai World's Fair looked at Spokane for a model of how to conduct their own World's Fair. We are in a leadership position still, 50 years later, almost 50 years later. So that King Cole Commemorative Project is now at the stage at which they have selected three finalists for that artwork, and it would not just be King Cole, but also take a look at that team that came together to bring that World's Fair to Spokane, and that is proceeding. So now I think we can, if nobody has any questions, we might open it up to our Park Board members and their topic. We have Jerry Sperling with the Golf Committee.
Yep, that'd be great.
Jerry, did you want to?
All right. Give it up. I'll start off right away. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, great. Thanks. Just, I'm going to do just a quick overview and touch on the bullet points that, you have a summary, if you will, in front of you. But right now, Golf is currently concluding a four-year, $8 million strategic investment in three of our irrigation systems. The systems have been replaced at Indian Canyon, which opened in 1935, and at Moranda, which opened in 1954. Downriver opened in 1916, and that irrigation is 80% complete, and we are focused on the end of May. We are hoping that that will work. We have incentives, of course, for the irrigation project and working, of course, with our land management. The investment in these three courses has been upgraded, antiquated, manual irrigation systems, some of the oldest, and improved the customer-golfing experience. The council approved our SIP law, and that's something I think you all remember, except for some of you new people. And that's being repaid by our golf rates favor. The Creek Cut Falchion, I haven't forgotten, and that is our youngest course, which was opened in 1993. So growing the game of golf is something that we are always looking at in our marketing regime, and I have listed just a variety of things that will be going on. But just make note, May 2nd, the Creek Cut Falchion will host the IE PGA Pro Event. The last that I'll close with, and this has already transpired, but Golf has made its mark in the Spokane area and the communities beyond. And on April 23rd, it was the date to officially end up Mark Gardner, our PGA Director of Golf at the Creek Cut Falchion, and the Pacific Northwest PGA Hall of Fame. So we would like to offer congrats to Mark. to Mark and all the pros that are out there. They're doing just a fantastic job. I highly invite and recommend that some of you council members, if you haven't been to our courses, that you take time this summer and visit. With that, I'll conclude golf. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry. Land Committee is represented by Greta Gilman.
Hi, good morning, Council. I have a couple items for discussion today, and they're both related, and they're both related, obviously, to land. The first item is that I believe it's important that we develop a policy for non-park use of parkland. During my time on the park board and as Chair of the Land Committee, the park board has been asked to approve using parkland for non-park purposes. And these requests have proven to be challenging for the Land Committee and the General Park Board, because there are so many, so many different opinions about these types of uses. And as Chair of the committee that often hears these requests, I recommend that we develop a policy for non-park use of parkland to help guide park board members through the process of approving these types of uses or not approving these types of uses. I believe and am hoping that the Park and Open Space Master Plan that Jennifer and Nick discussed in very much detail will provide us with the data and other information we need to devise a policy that meets the needs of park users, because that's really our mission as a park board. And there's an, there was an interesting stat on the 10% review draft of Park Natural Lands Master Plan, which stated that including golf courses, parkways, and natural lands, the average number acres, developed acres per 1,000 people in Spokane is 5.8 developed acres, which is significantly lower than the national average of 9.9 developed acres per 1,000 people. So to me, that says that we need to be very, very careful about what we use our parklands for, because we are a little bit low on the capital average for developed parklands. And then a related item is park surplus property. And Jennifer also mentioned the fact that we own some, a number of pieces of properties scattered throughout the city that are not developed into parks and are sometimes maintenance issues, not always, but sometimes. And as you know, Section 48 of the City Charter says, neither the park board nor the city council shall have the power to sell or exchange any existing park or portion thereof without the prior approval of the electorate given by a majority vote. And so, while, while, well-intended, I think this section of the, the City Charter in some ways really hampers our ability as a park board to manage our, our parklands for the use and enjoyment of golf, which, once again, that is our charter. So I'm interested in exploring those two items. And if any of you on the council would like to work on some of those issues with me, I would be more than happy. And please get in touch with me about that. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Greta. Yeah, the master plan backs up, Greta, in that the majority of the residents really value conservation and preservation and protection of our natural lands and our park spaces. And as we know, if we, we have to have something to preserve to pass on to future generations and keep things from being sort of nibbled away. So while we look for partnerships, we always have to be very protective of our parklands. If it's all right with you, I'll go ahead to the other committee chairs, and then we'll have a general discussion and coming back to these issues that you might want to discuss at the end. So Sally was not able to be here for Recreation Committee. You have that report, also Bob Anderson for Finance. Kevin Brownlee with the Urban Forestry. Kevin, did you want to say anything to update your, your report? Oh, you're muted, sir.
Thank you, and good morning. I won't go over the whole report, but in addition to growing and maintaining Spokane's tree canopy, one of the main areas that was included in the report was the fact that Park Department staff is responsible for inspections on private property in residential and commercial developments. And that was an arrangement made between two directors previously. And I'm not sure that's an appropriate role for Park Department staff, so I'm interested in exploring how to unravel that arrangement and making that inspection function a part of planning rather than the Park Department. So that's, as my first initiative, I've attended one meeting so far of the Urban Forestry Committee. That's my main area of interest at this point.
Thank you, Kevin. One of the other things we've been looking at for Urban Forestry is to take a look at the assets that we have in our parks as they are botanical gardens, as, as assets for education and from a wider horticultural view of all of those wonderful species that we have, and those specimens.
Jennifer?
Nick?
Jennifer, a quick, quick question for Kevin or somebody, I guess. What, what are those inspections for exactly? I'm not too aware.
Well, and again, it's new to me, but someone else can probably answer more thoroughly. It has to do with the regulations for planting in terms of swales and green space on parking lots or residential properties, and making sure that the new developments meet those requirements.
I see. Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't understand why Parks Department staff would do that on private property. That's, that is strange. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to add a little bit, Councilmember Cathcart, it's, again, I think we agree as well as trying to unravel this, as Kevin mentioned, from some previous arrangements. A lot of it, too, is tied around the certificate of occupancy for certain buildings in those final inspections. And again, when, a lot of times, those inspections are around the health and safety of the public or private utilizing those facilities. So it's just finding that balance. And again, I, we're happy, the staff, that this is a priority from, from Kevin on our committee, because it does add a lot of extra time and burden. And Parks and Recreation, in our world, we're not a regulatory agency. We're a support and resource agency. And so kind of getting us out of that regulatory role and finding creative ways to help build our urban canopy, but at the same time being that resource that doesn't stop private or commercial development.
And I think taking a look at that issue and getting it unraveled would help streamline park staff time and resources and its allocation of resources a great deal. So I think that's an important one to, to undertake. Riverfront Park Committee, Nick Sumner, did you want to add anything?
Um, just, I wanted to highlight the good work that John Mogan and his staff have done with the park since we've completed primarily the bond construction projects throughout the park, and really highlight in the report that I, that we put together, you know, that we're not done, even though we've stopped, you know, we've pretty much completed all the construction projects minus some art installations that still need to go on. If you look for what's going on in '22, there's some great new projects and things that are being looked at, Dog Park, some more bridge work that's going to happen, Red Wagon repair and, and upgrade, or not upgrade, but painting and just refreshing, I guess. A new sign in that corner there, just a lot of good things. We're really continuing to look at how Spokane citizens use the park and what can we do to help meet the needs of the growing population and the ever-changing needs of, of just people and, and really build a park that's going to help us grow into the future. So it's an amazing park. It's an amazing jewel for our city, and we're continuing to work to make it even better.
Thank you, Nick. So to wrap up, council members, for your consideration and, and sort of rumination over your coffee, the potential bond project, the potential ask for a development policy that encourages or requires developers to set aside parkland when they develop an apartment complex or green space for a housing unit. The joint use asks for parks developing guidelines along that to preserve our parks while at the same time looking for partnerships that truly do add to the experience of park users, but again, being very protective of that parkland so that we have something to pass forward into the future. And then finally, the issue of unpacking permitting, which is not a park function, from the park requirement from park staff time and putting it where it belongs, perhaps in planning. Those are kind of, to my mind, the four things that are coming up for you to consider partnering with us in, in helping us unravel and make better. Thank you. Questions? This is what we wanted. Time for questions.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, not, not much of a question, just a comment. I guess, to me, I would not pursue further development requirements, especially right now with the middle, in the middle of this housing crisis. You know, we're already not the easiest place to build, and that's why we're seeing 1% growth, whereas the folks around us are seeing 4% and 5% growth. And so we need to make it easier, less cumbersome, less obstacles. My suggestion would be, if we're going to go out for a bond anyway, let's wrap it all into that bond. Parks are, you know, share users across the city. You know, I live in Northeast Spokane and represent Northeast Spokane, but I do visit Manitow Park from time to time and other parks around our city. And so I think it makes sense that all of our residents would be participating in that and not just latecomer homeowners and renters, and make them, penalize them essentially, just because they're latecomers. So I, I would, I would do this citywide, and I would do it through the bond or levy or however we're gonna, we're gonna do that. That'd be my recommendation.
Thank you for that.
When you're looking at acquiring land for new parks up in Shiloh Hills, I'm looking right here where it looks like you've got something along Lincoln and Nevada in there. Is that where you were thinking that you'd be putting in a new park in, or do you have a, a different idea?
Kind of a Nick and Garrett question.
I can certainly provide some backup there. Yeah, so we would be looking east of Nevada. Just north of Lincoln is a good, large undeveloped area. We haven't approached any landowners with a specific ask yet, but that is the general location. We do want to be near the apartment complexes there, certainly, because there's a large portion of, of individuals we want to try and connect with. So in that general area, I think it's a, it's a good idea there.
I was just kind of going back to Greta's point about the requests for use of parkland for ostensibly non-park uses. You could, we could quibble over the details of that. But Greta, I'm just wondering, and maybe there's more than one, but I'm wondering if the water tower at Hamlin Park, was, was that the piece that was causing the most heartburn, or have there been other ones as well? Just wondering.
You're muted, Greta.
Sorry about that. Thank you for asking. Others that have come for me that I would say caused similar heartburn, I guess, have been, for me, as the times that I've been on park board, have been the, the Sportsplex is an example of, of one where, where we were able to work out an agreement where in return for the land, Parks is able to use the facility a certain number of days per week in our agreement. Libraries have come to us, and charging stations. Avista has come and, and asked for charging stations on parkland, and I, and I don't know where, where that one has, has gone. So they all, they all, I don't, I couldn't call it heartburn, but they do create a concern to make sure that we're not just death by a thousand cuts at giving away parkland, and then one day we'll find ourselves, wow, we wish we would have still had that piece, because there's something we'd like to do on it. And that's why a policy, I believe, would be, would be really helpful.
Did you, did you have ideas, either you or anyone else on the park board, of, you know, who you want to convene as kind of a group to develop that policy? Do you want to do it, you know, with a couple of council members and park board members or broader? I'm just wondering what you're envisioning as far as next steps on that.
I love a group of starting out with park board members and, and park staff and council members, you know, as a team, working together to come up with a policy. Others on the park board may have different ideas or, or suggestions for that.
There has been an initial stab, sort of a draft, to get things started on that vein. You know, some of us feel that there's a parallel mission with libraries, for example, or the Sportsplex in terms of the amenities that are brought to the park in exchange for the use of the land. But Greta's right, the, the general approach, and I think one of the city engineers actually referred to Hamlin Park at one point as vacant land. It's not vacant land. It's a park. It has purpose. Vacant implies unpurposed and, and almost delinquent. So we don't want parks to be seen as available vacant land for development. We want parks to be, to be preserved. So we would welcome council input on that. And at the same time, recognizing, recognizing that partnerships, like the Sportsplex and libraries, that bring in additional program, bring in additional amenities for park users can be good partnerships. It's just a very careful line we have to walk, a very careful balancing act. So we would welcome your input.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so, I mean, it, it sounds like the partnerships with, you know, the Sportsplex or, or the, the libraries, maybe schools, those are sort of accepted. I, I'm wondering, what are some examples of some, some areas where there are concerns? I, I'm assuming this is inspired by the water tower conversation, but beyond just water towers or those sorts of uses, are there other areas where we've lost parkland and, and that's the instigator for this?
I don't, I guess my, my concern is the way parkland is viewed. It's oftentimes, it's almost like the deals are worked out before they come to us. And sometimes the reason that parkland is picked as a desirable site is because of an assumption that it's not going to cost anything to, to build on parkland. And I, I believe that there are, that we should be brought in at the very beginning of these types of conversations as a normal landowner. I always like to think, well, if I own this property, is this, would I think this was a good deal? And I feel like as park board members, we should re-represent the citizens of Spokane as the owners of the property, and we should try to get a good deal in, in these partnerships. And I'm not trying to say that the Sportsplex is a bad deal, or that the libraries are a bad deal. I, what I'm just trying to say is let's have a policy where we can feel very comfortable that it's a good deal for the citizens of Spokane, without opinions coming into the mix so much.
So there is another example besides the water tower. The, Avista had approached us about putting maybe 10 EV charging stations at one of our parks. And, and the issue with that isn't that EV charging is bad. No, of course not. We love to be environmental leaders. But is a park an appropriate place for fueling automobiles? That's not a park mission, to provide automobile fuel. And maybe it wouldn't have taken up a lot of land in the park, the charging station itself, but the parking would have been impacted for our park users, people lining up to charge their vehicles. That's not an appropriate use of parkland, and it's not for park users. You know, we're, we're just not in the business of providing fuel for
So if, if the charter
People not using the park.
If, I guess my, another question would be, if the charter does prevent us from, you know, selling or providing these other uses on parkland without a vote of the people, how have we, how have we been able to get around that for the partnerships with the libraries and the Sportsplex? And, and is that something that, that, like these EVs, you would have to go to a vote theoretically because you're taking away parkland for that purpose?
So those are long-term leases, and we are still the owners of that land, ownership. The title of that land does not change. It's just a lease.
Okay.
And so, for example, the Sportsplex is a lease for 60 years.
For $60.
For $60. It's a dollar a year.
Long-term leases for a dollar a year. So we lose the use of the land and for, for basically no comp. So, we lose the use of the land and for basically no compensation. So, parks have to benefit in other ways. And I'm not saying we aren't benefiting in other ways from those two particular examples. But it would be easier if we had some guidelines and policy to follow when these things come to us.
I've got more questions, but I won't take up all the time right now. But I'll follow up offline.
And I just want to push back a little bit. The EV stations are for park users. That's what they are. I mean, lots of places have EV stations for their users who have EV vehicles. So, maybe 10 at one place pushes that. But I just see it as people who have EVs and want to use the park, that's where they would park. But I think the point that you've made, Greta, very well is, it should be early contact and engagement with the park board to say. Because I've certainly, in the time I've been on city council, seen people come up with ideas and then say, oh, yeah, we'll just use that parkland as if it's just easy. So, I get that sentiment, but it sounds like it's more of a process than a definitive piece. Although, the other piece is, at some point, I think we do need to maybe go to the voters with a charter update on these issues. Is a 60-year lease for $60, is that the spirit of it or not? And also, how can we get rid of these small plate things? I mean, there are just some things that need to be there. And I'm particularly interested if we could change the language that would allow us to do it as a package deal. Right now, we have some limitations when we go to a vote, that it has to be one subject. And so, if you have 30 little partial things that you want to dispose of, you know, do you have to have 30 votes on it? Or can you do one vote and things like that? So, I just think there's some things that we could work with on that. So, I think that's worth going.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd certainly open to those conversations. I think it would make sense to think about a charter update. I'm wondering, though, the $60 for 60 years, couldn't we have just simply insisted on something more? I mean, it's our land. Couldn't we have insisted on a greater?
Well, we did. We got very good use of that land that wasn't being used anyway. So, we have a value that's just not cash. It's use of the building. So, I think, and Greta was, I remember, a leading voice in negotiating a good arrangement for us. But at the end of the day, we felt like we were getting value for land that otherwise was pretty underutilized. So.
And if I could, Council President, you know, typically, you know, as a Sportsplex example, that was purchased during the 1999 bond for the use of, like, a science center-type facility. So, there was actually some bond language to it as far as that type of use for that facility. And, you know, typically as well, when any type of these proposals come to our desks, what we do, and even though it's not legally binding, we do a lot of LOIs. So, whether it was the libraries or the Sportsplex, we'll just come to the park board with a simple letter of intent just to kind of outline those type of arrangements before we move further in any type of formal agreements that would ultimately need park board approval. And that's just how we handle it. I think our methodology too, a lot of times, if we see the joint benefit between programming and use and joint use between facilities, we'll just bring it to the park board for discussion to have that, rather than it sitting on one of our desks or being dead at arrival. We just have those conversations upfront.
And I will say that, to me, the water tower was very attenuated, and council led part of the effort to move it, not into that. And so, we reached an agreement with the school district. And some people, if you live in that neighborhood, you're like, well, same difference to us. But it was technically different. It wasn't on park property. And the school district owed us a lot of goodwill for all the property that we have given them at no charge. And so, it came down to it. But I just wanted to point out that I thought the water tower location seemed to be outside the bounds of the typical joint benefit, even though I'm sure there would be a little bit of watering. Well, there's not watering at that location, so, for other locations. But, so that's good. Any other issues that were kind of mentioned of potential future conversations that people wanted to flesh out anymore? Councilmember Bingle.
I've just been thinking through the EV charging stations since we talked about it at the parks. And my only thought there is, because you're right, people with EVs are using parks, I get it. But then, if people are coming there and charging their vehicles, is the Parks Department paying for them to be charging their vehicles there?
No, I think Avista's providing the things.
Thank you.
And it might get more people to use parks. You know, you've got a half an hour to charge your vehicle, and you can go enjoy the park. But again, if you're talking 10 at one location, that might be a very different experience than that. You're on mute again, Greta, or at least we can't hear you.
We didn't object. But we asked Avista to come back with more definition on how many and where. And we wanted to put some bounds around the EV agreement. And the agreement has not come back. It may come back. I'm not sure where it lands.
Yep.
No, it hasn't. And I think one of our biggest challenges, as you know, we have park rules that have curfews when parks are open and closed. And originally, Avista would like to see these charging stations used during non-peak hours, which are in some cases, not during park hours. So, that is a challenge from enforcement-type situation as well. And so, I'd say, right now, that's one of the other biggest challenges that we have right at this moment as far as the timing use of those facilities. If they were on parkland, how would we address the park hour rules in the SMC to accommodate that?
So, Garrett, is there a, right now, are any of the parks where these are tentatively slated to be installed? Are they the same parks where we have the pilot for no parking?
Originally, Councilmember Cathcart, we were looking at possible locations in Riverfront, Liberty Park adjacent to the new library, and Shadle adjacent to the new library. A lot of this discussion was tied towards the construction of those libraries, if there was any advantage to tie in those charging stations while those projects were being constructed. But to that point, we were only focusing on some of those areas. And then golf courses was another potential area that was being investigated as well.
But places like Chief Gary or Court of Lane, where we have those, the strict enforcement, you know, no parking after 10:00 PM, those are not currently on the list for the EV? Okay.
No.
All right. Any other questions or comments from park board members or council members? All right. I'm not seeing one. Again, park board, you're one of the hardest-working boards out there. We really appreciate all your work and commitment to the community and look forward to further developments. I really like this tact that you're taking about more engagement with the community and the Friends of Organizations and flushing those out and dog parks. And of course, we're getting very excited for the 50-year anniversary for Expo. So, thanks for all that work. Take care, everyone.
Thank you for your time.
And then let us switch. We're going to talk a little bit on American Rescue Plan. Matt Boston actually has been doing some amazing wrangling and cat herding to try to get these RFPs going a little faster. And so, he's going to give us an update on a couple of them today. We're going to get more next week as well. But Matt, we'll turn it over to you.
Before we start.
Oh, before we start?
Matt, I had a conversation with Steve McDonald today. So, we want to talk to you about some of the things that we discussed last, you know, earlier this week. So, just put that in the parking lot for now. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. And would you like me to kind of talk about the issues that we've talked about on kind of a broader sense? And then, at the very least, introduce the fact that we're looking, going towards hiring a project employee?
No, I'm just working on the RFPs that are coming up. So.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So then, that sounds like we're kind of narrowing this conversation down to two of the RFPs, the incentives that we have so far, and that's going to be childcare and affordable housing. As Council President said, we've been doing a lot of discussions with all of the subcommittees and getting these RFPs out the door as soon as possible so that they benefit the community. The two projects that we're talking about today, both were allocated back on the 3rd of January of this year. Childcare, I'll start off with, and that is going to be the subcommittee that is led by Councilmembers Zepone and Wilkerson. And then, for the administration side, Eric Finch. There's been several meetings internally with that group as well as with community members to try to understand the actual needs that are out there. I believe two community outreach sessions were had with different organizations to really tell out what exactly the need was. In the original narrative, there were three components that were, that the council was looking to accomplish with these funds. And that was capital as well as vouchers for families that are needing childcare for their children, and then some staff-oriented spending, whether that be retention or recruitment. In those community outreach sessions, it was determined that there is additional revenue sources that are out there for capital funding of childcare facilities. So, it was determined to actually take that initiative off and actually include the need for mental health support within the childcare facility. I know there is an RFP, or I'm sorry, an FBO that is coming forward to increase this allocation from the original $1 million that was allocated back on the 3rd of January to $3 million to incorporate all of the needs being met. That is slated to be voted on Monday. Other than that, I will leave it open for questions. And I know Councilmember Zepone may chime in at any point.
Yeah, Councilmember, well, I'll let Councilmember Cath, excuse me, Kinnear ask your question. But then, I was going to look for a little more detail on the RFP components after that. But go ahead, Councilmember Kinnear.
Matt, thanks. Do you have a running list of all the potential requests so that we're not over-promising and under-delivering? Okay. Is there any way that we all could have that so that we know?
Yes, I think that would be actually pretty beneficial. Let me see if I can do it in a way that's a little bit easier to digest. As we've gone through this process, we've asked for community input, and we've received it from organizations, community members, and businesses alike. And some of them have been very, very robust in their request. Some of them have been minimal in their request and don't even necessarily meet the framework of the ARPA guidelines. So, I'm happy to talk to the council, ARPA committee on Tuesday and see how best to present that to council, but I'm happy to do so.
Thank you.
Well, and at a minimum, we can get, these are the proposals that we've approved monetary amounts of the amount so people know. And then, these are the ones that we're talking about right now so that people kind of know that. And then, the bigger list you're asking for is like everything that anyone's asked for. That's the board challenging.
I'm concerned that there are, not just requests, but promises being made right now, not necessarily by council. And I'm just getting nervous because you think $80 million is a lot of money until it's not. And all of a sudden, we've promised $90 million. It's not there. So, just want to make sure that we're not overstepping our bounds.
Absolutely. Last I checked, we were in the high $20 million in terms of allocation so far. And that includes projects that are going to be, that are going to fit into the revenue replacement bucket as well as community outreach initiatives. So, I can get that, but there shouldn't be any promises that are being made as there is kind of a standard protocol of the way that proposals need to be addressed and reviewed by council. And without an allocation of an FBO, there really can't be a promise, in my opinion.
All right. Switch. Councilmember Zepone, if you could tell us maybe a little more about what the components of childcare are.
Yeah, well, yeah. So, as we heard from Tanya last week, she was hopefully going to get us a RFP, but that did not come, the contract. So, we sent these general guidelines about it, and we're hoping they can get us to the details, which the guideline was like middle-income earners. And then, we sent over the table of what the state's doing. And that there's a gap between now and 2025 is when the state kicks in. So, we don't have the specific details, but that's the general idea. So, and then, maybe now is a good idea. Like, if that idea's not working, then we could kick it back to them and be like, can you modify? This general idea is not working with council, the rest of council. So, it was really around flexibility of the staffing. They wanted to be able to hire additional staff members, depending on different providers and what their needs were. But if they needed that or to alleviate stress on other staff, whether it's a floating position, an extra person, they all stressed that we need a regional mental health coordinator position that would serve multiple providers and like coach them up and help support them. They said that we have one right now for the region, and they really see an additional person for that. So, that was the flexibility on the staffing, the mental health, and then the vouchers. It's probably not as much detail as you're hoping, but we can take the feedback.
Okay.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I'm generally supportive. But the part that I am, where I'm a little stuck and I want to get some more clarity on is the mental health aspect. And, because I feel like, I mean, there's a lot of professions. There's a lot of folks who are, you know, frontline workers through COVID. There's a lot of folks that sort of, you could argue, might need mental health. So, why this one industry and not the many others that we could argue on the mental health side? But.
It's helping for the kids. So, it trains the staff to be better trauma-informed caretakers of the kids.
Okay, because I was told this was to treat staff. That's what was shared with me, was that this is for treating staff.
That was not my understanding.
Okay. So, that's very different.
If anyone else heard more.
That's very different.
Well, we got to see what they come back with from the administration because I tend to agree with you, Councilmember, that it's like, all right, if there's a targeted piece, but what does that mean? And I think, I mean, I've gone to groups in the industry, and they've talked about an array of mental health supports and have included both what you said and what you said. And so, we're trying to narrow it down to what council wants to do with these funds. Yeah. And then, Matt Boston, I see your hands raised.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, the way that the memo has been laid out from council to the committee, the subcommittee that's actually developing the parameters of this project, it really sounds like it's focused more towards the children that they provide care for. And really, that was explicitly stated out within the Department of Treasury guidance that there is its own category under the negative economic impact of addressing educational disparities, mental health services. So, it's those children that are within the educational range that have been very impacted, obviously, by the pandemic and all that it's brought. So, I believe that it's focused towards the children, but that's just my understanding.
All right. Want to go to the housing? So, we're going to do sub-area planning next week. We were going to do it this week, but we need a little more time. But we're going to do that next week.
We don't need time. We just don't have Spencer here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, anyways.
But the vouchers I was going to ask, because originally you had the idea of newly-employed employees. So, this direction's moving okay with folks.
Well, let's see what the RFP says, and then we'll wordsmith it. But yeah, what Zach's bringing up is originally, we had talked about vouchers to fill a gap for newly-employed people, to pay 100% of their first month, 50% of their second, third, while they're getting their income in. That was the thing. What the community groups were saying is, well, that is something, but there's this bigger, wider gap of families until the state's new program in 2025 comes in. So, let's provide vouchers more broadly than just people who have just gotten employment. But a lot of that's going to have to do with how much money there is and that. So, I'd say we wait till we see with that language, and then we can wordsmith that.
Yeah. And there was a concern that even if they become newly-employed, they might have to leave the workforce, even if they started working.
Right.
And some people who aren't there now might leave because they're just above the threshold. Because there's like lower income threshold and then like that middle threshold. So, that was the idea around it.
Yeah. So, we'll see. All right. But the other one that we've been really trying to get at. to get out is the affordable, the gap funding for affordable housing projects. And I think, give us the, where we are on that. I think we're getting darn close, like we're just about to issue it.
Absolutely. And just if I may, touch on the childcare piece, just that last conversation that you were having. I don't think that we need to have one exclusive without the other. I think really, we can, in the RFP, we can put together the wording, just like you said, you know, just kind of wordsmithing it there, where there are two phases of the program. There is the employee onboard phase of the program, and then there is the ongoing maintenance phase of the program to help the childcare incentive. So that's the only touch that I would add on that. But next is affordable housing. This group was, Council President Beggs, Brian McClatchy, Jen Teresides, and George Dahl. Jen Teresides and George Dahl did an excellent job with the heavy lifting on getting this out the door. They did a great job at kind of combining the funds to create the most, the max impact for the community. This is going to be in conjunction with our $1406 to net out to a total of $9.5 million of award that's going out there. As Council President said, the incentive is to have this RFP issued today, which is April 25th, and that's on their timeline, unless there's any sort of discrepancies that come up during this conversation.
I'm just interrupting you. It's 1406 and 1590, so, for people. And it's the gap funding piece. Existing projects that just need to be topped up could get done.
Right. I apologize. So the way that they have this proposal is to have workshops, technical assistance workshops for the beneficiaries that are going to be out there. This is, you know, at the end of the day, to provide more affordable housing for our community citywide. The workshops are slated to be the 4th and the 10th, so the next few weeks, and then a close of applications due by the end of May, and then issue by, issuing contracting by July, August of this year, hoping to impact at least part of the 2022 building season. This is going to obviously fit easily into the long-term housing security, affordable housing, which is the expenditure category laid out by the Department of Treasury, and then as well as the 14, sorry, the 1406 and the 1590 as well. Happy to take any questions on that.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, so to your knowledge, is this structured to only be focused on gap funding, or their homeownership opportunities provisions, and then is it open to both for-profit and nonprofit to potentially apply?
So open to for-profit and nonprofit, per the RFP that they have written so far. It is, I believe there is an incentive towards homeownership, and I believe you had one other question. What was the last? I apologize.
Well, is it mostly focused on gap funding, or is it broader, broader than that, I guess?
It's broader. Let me just get to that page.
The way I would characterize it is it's broader in terms of anyone can apply for anything, but the emphasis is gap funding.
Okay.
So we're letting people know that, you know, in the future, 1590 is going to be used more broadly. But the intent at this point on the ARPA piece is the gap funding, and we're kind of sharing that on the 1590, 1406 portion of this package. Gap funding's the emphasis, but anyone can apply for any, and private, nonprofit. I think there's some other programs that we're hoping for ARPA that will come forward that will emphasize homeownership more than this. But it's not limited to that. Anyone could do that.
And so if a private builder developer said, you know, hey, I'm building this 100-unit apartment complex, I can make a certain number of these units affordable, could they sort of apply for some dollars to sort of compensate in terms of making it affordable? Would that be kind of within the realm of this RFP?
I mean, yes. There are a list of qualifications that a developer would actually need to hit this, affordable housing being one of them, also hitting the target populations that are out there. I mean, persons with disabilities, veterans, senior citizens, et cetera. There's a list that would be checked off, and then following the scoring matrix would be how the funds are actually shelled out.
Okay.
And I'll just say, Michael, I think in the future, for 1590 in particular, I'm really hoping that we'll figure that out. I think it would be unlikely in this round, just the way projects are generally funded and that. But I really like the idea of down the road, that we could say, hey, builder, if you're going to build 50 units, we'll buy five of them, and make them permanently affordable, and we'll give you money upfront to do. So I hope we create that model. I don't think this is likely, they're not precluded, but it's just not as user-friendly. So it's exactly what I want, and you get the mixed use and the mixed incomes, and so...
Mixed income is the real support.
Yeah, so I really hope that we go down that direction. But Councilmember Kinnear had a question before I interrupted.
What's the mechanism for making sure that the builders are going to adhere to that affordable model? I'm guessing it's in perpetuity, right? And...
Well, maybe 40 years or something.
Okay, so that's, yeah, for our purposes. But the other piece is, so you've got, let's say, your scenario, where you have got maybe a quarter of them affordable and three-quarters are market rate. Is there a way to make sure that the affordable units are going to be maintained at the same level that the market rate units will be maintained, so we don't have a rent control situation where a landlord won't maintain because they aren't making money, enough money back to do so?
So I'll jump in, Matt. So in the scenario that Councilmember Cathcart and I were talking about, the city would fund the money for a nonprofit to purchase those units, and they would manage them like any other nonprofit that manages affordable units. And so it wouldn't be left to the, you know, so that would be their mission. And then, but in terms of how you make sure that this money is spent on permanently affordable or 40-year, it's going to be the same mechanisms we use for all our projects.
For MFTs and...
Yeah, it's all of it.
Okay, got it.
So it is a cost of monitoring. One of the things the department was interested is like, okay, so there's a piece of the money we're allocating that the department has to hold back for administrative.
Yeah.
Any other questions on this one?
All right, well, just keep us posted.
And I will say, George Dahl has reached out, and he is really in the minutia with this. So if you have any kind of detailed questions, please feel free, feel free to reach out to him directly.
Yeah. And again, I think based on some of the work Matt has done the last couple weeks, being a cat herder, I will be seeing more of these more regularly for the first two tranches. And then the other thing, just as a preview for next week, there's some discussion, I've sent out some emails around this, of a couple of projects of trying to get them done early, not the RFP, but just tranche three. We've been saying we're going to do tranche three for several things that people have been talking about, as soon as we got a few of these RFPs, but there's some deadlines coming up. So we might discuss that next Thursday for potential vote on the 9th. So just to stay tuned for that.
Okay. You're not going to be here on the 9th?
I know, but I would, I may be here for a vote.
Okay, okay.
If needed.
Okay.
If the RFP is done today on the housing, can we get that sent out? That'd be great, if we can see that.
Yeah, yeah. To council, just a call.
I was informed by George that the timeline on this is actually in a draft format. I don't believe that the RFP will be issued today, but I believe it's in the very near future. I'll get the council a date as soon as possible.
But the draft is in the packet, so.
It is.
And just for your guys' awareness, next week, we have the playground projects, eviction defense, and subarea planning that we'll be discussing.
Next week?
Yep. So we'll just keep cycling them through every Thursday. We'll have a few.
Yep. Okay, anything else? All right. Well, thanks, everyone. We're adjourned, and we'll see you on Monday.